6th of November, County Commission meeting. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphones, please. And meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly over here. And if you need a listening device, Robert would be able to help you with that here up front. With that, we'll go right into routine business.
Good morning. First order of business would be consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second to approve the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Second item would be to approve the county commission minutes from 11/19/2013.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the commission minutes from November 19th. Any changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Third item on the agenda is bills to be paid in the amount of $3,178,838.36.
Make a motion to approve with that change. A little motion, is there a second?
No, a second.
A motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, on page 25, there's a bill for $121,800. The vendor number is 4652. We need to change it to vendor number 13702. It's a payment to US Bank on some of our debt service.
Okay. We have an amendment to the bills to be paid.
Otherwise, the rest of the bills, I could remark on them, I guess. I'm not sure.
I'll second that amendment.
Thank you, John. We have a motion to approve the bills with the amendment to change the vendor to US Bank. Commissioner?
Our bills are a little high this month, but we have some debt service for just about two and a half, $2.6 million. So that's why our bills are so high this week.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion to amend and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes on the amendment. Now I need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
The amended motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the amended motion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Are we going too fast, Ms. Secretary?
Well, I'm doing okay here, thanks. So keep in mind, you're stuck with me tonight at the city, too, so.
Oh, God, thanks for telling us.
Personnel reports. I don't think we have any reports today. So number five is personnel actions. Carrie Dever.
You might want to walk slow, so Bob can catch up.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have several items for you. The first one thankfully is easy, and it's just a motion to approve regular personnel actions.
Second, motion. I'll make the motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Any comments, questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Item B.
Item B is a special personnel action request to consider authorizing one additional deputy public advocate position at a pay grade 21 in the 2014 public advocate budget and to begin recruitment immediately. And Cindy Howard is here to explain the request.
Good morning, Cindy.
Good morning. Now, good night. I'm not on time. Thank you, Ms. [inaudible]. In my, in the memo that I sent you, I provided a chart with some statistics on it. If you look to the far right, the 2013 column, we had 1,210 new openings this year as of last week. We have had 25 new files this week. So that number today is 1,235.
Cindy, could you pull it? Mike, a little closer, please. Thank you.
25 new cases a week has been about our average this year. There are five weeks left in the year. So even giving some allowance for Christmas good cheer, I think we're going to get up to about 1,350 cases, new openings for 2013. The next number down in that column is cases closed as of September 30th, 2013. As we speak, Justine is working on closing our October cases. And that, so that number will be up a little bit over 100 by this afternoon. We let our cases, our closed cases, sit in the drawer for a month before we do the official closing and do the statistics. But some of our cases have a way of coming back to life, and we don't like to close them prematurely. If you look down, the next number down is the attorney caseload equivalent. If you look from the top, the cases open to the attorney caseload equivalent, you can see that in our office, 200 cases is about the equivalent of one attorney. That's about what one attorney should be expected to handle during the year. Once we go up to 1,300 cases a year, we now have five attorneys in the office, but I'm assuming that by the end of the year, our caseload equivalent is going to be quite a bit over six. I think we'll be closer to six and a quarter by the end of the year. As I said in my memo, the real issue is not the numbers. If we could handle this caseload comfortably, we would, and I wouldn't be here making this request. But we can't. We're required to provide competent representation to our clients. It's a requirement both of the United States Constitution, it's required by the state constitution, it's required by the attorney's code of professional responsibility, and it's required by this commission. One of your duties as commissioners is to make sure that indigent criminal defendants receive adequate representation in court. There is a floor of competence that's required of attorneys doing criminal defense work. We're just about scraping that floor. There are five attorneys in our office now. One is leaving at the beginning of next week. One of the reasons she's leaving is because of her heavy caseload. We're all, we're stressed out, we're working overtime, we're cutting corners. And unfortunately, the corners that we're cutting is spending time with our clients, explaining their cases to them, and gaining their trust. And those are the corners that end up making cases more difficult and more expensive for us and for you. An unhappy client, the client is going to be unhappy with the result that they get, no matter what it is, and they're going to end up appealing, they may file a habeas corpus action. It's a case that's going to go on and on and cost the taxpayers more money. In your own lives, you wouldn't trust a surgeon who walked in the room and met you, talked to you for two minutes and said, "I'm going to take out one of your kidneys." In our line of work, clients don't trust an attorney who meets them, talks to him for 20 minutes, and says, "I think five years in prison is a good deal for you." We need to spend time with our clients, we need to gain their trust, we need to explain their cases to them so they understand what's going on. And then they're more willing to accept our advice and suggestions. No one in our office expects their job to be easy. No one became a public defender because they want to sit at their desk and drink coffee and read the newspaper. We expect our jobs to be difficult, we expect our jobs to be busy, we expect our jobs to be stressful and demanding. But we've gotten to the point where we're so busy, so stressed, and the number of cases we have is so demanding that we cannot serve our clients well, we cannot meet the requirements that we're required to meet for the Constitution, for the state code of professional responsibility, and for the standards that this commission has for providing adequate representation to our clients. I have a daughter in college. She goes to college in Ohio. It's a thousand miles away. We see her for a couple of weeks at Christmas, usually a couple of weeks in the summer. This summer, she was home for about six weeks. At the end of the time, I asked her, you know, how the summer had gone. She said she was excited to get back to school. It hadn't been a very good summer. I asked her what were her disappointments. She looked at me and said, "You work all the time." The job that we're doing now takes demands on our personal lives, our family lives, and it doesn't serve our clients well. Because of that, I'm asking for an additional position. We're in the process of hiring to fill Jan's job. We've got plenty of qualified applicants, some experienced, some not-so-experienced, and we need an additional person. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Kelly? Cindy, has there been any change in the type of, you get strictly referred, right? I mean, doesn't the PDO have to conflict out before you get involved?
Sometimes there are two people who appear in court together, and the court knows that there's going to be a conflict, so we get appointed right away. But a lot of cases are conflict cases in the public.
Is the demographics of that changing? Are you getting different kinds of cases? Are you getting more difficult cases?
We've, in the past couple of years, we've seen a real increase in drug cases. This year, we're getting a lot of robberies. But generally, about 30% of our caseload is felonies.
Any other comments or questions? If not, Cindy, and thank you for your appearance today, and we certainly appreciate the fact that your struggles are difficult only, not only personally, but professionally, and you're still being a very significant leader to that group, so we do appreciate that. One of the things that we've asked the Public Defender's Office to do is to come up with a management report that talks a little bit about how many hours they actually spend in court, how many they spend with clients, what their billable hours are, so to speak, how much time they spend with educational kinds of needs that they all have. Can you tell me if you have something that's similar to that?
We don't. The only way we have of tracking that is to add things, is for me to go through paper timesheets and add up increments of time, which is, takes more time than I have.
Right.
You know, everyone is working overtime. I can tell you that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow on your comments. Cindy, you know, obviously when you perform stuff for indigent, a lien is put on them for your services. Do you happen to know how many hours of billable time, I guess, have been placed in liens?
Well, so far this year, our liens are a little over $300,000. But it doesn't just include time. If we hire an expert, or we travel, so there's mileage, those charges get added on, too. We haven't hired too many experts this year, so I would say $300,003.05 for the year so far.
Any other questions? Commissioner?
Well, I was just going to comment that the advisory board met and obviously approved this particular request. We get Cindy's reports periodically, and obviously, in looking at the amount of workflow that her office right now is undertaking, I definitely have the opinion that, I'm going to make, I'm going to approve it, but I don't know if the other commissioners are going to agree with me. However, I made the opportunity of going up there and talking to Cindy yesterday morning. I think that she's doing more than her yeoman's effort at trying to keep workflow proceeding. And Minnella County has always taken the position that we not only provide indigent defense when we have to pay for it, and of course, we complain about having to pay for it, but it's the top-notch legal defense that you're going to get. And without question, our defense attorneys are really the resource for the state of South Dakota. And when you need the varsity, you're going to be coming to Minnella County to get that kind of varsity help. So I'm going to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Riberger.
I'm just wondering about the funding source. I don't know if we have to ask Ken about that, or...
This week, I sent you the copy of the general fund cash balance report on where we are at as of the end of October. The simple answer to your question, Commissioner, is that's where it'll come from. It's going to come out of that general fund cash and what is available there. If you approve this request for 2014, you know, logistically speaking, and depending on the hire, I mean, we'll add it to payroll, but at some point in 2014, then you will need to do a notice of hearing to supplement the public defender's, or public advocates' budget for that, cost of that position. But it will come out of general fund cash.
So go ahead.
I'm just wondering, at the pay grade that it's at, what is that roughly? Pay grade 21? I don't know if Carrie wants to address that.
Pay grade 21 should be around $70,000. I'm all for community, but...
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I...
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly? Ken, you don't have to come back for this. Does that mean we've authorized the position, but we have not funded it?
No, you haven't authorized the position.
I mean, if we do today, we...
Correct.
It will be authorized, but not funded.
The funding, you will have to take an official action to fund it, and that you do that through a budget supplement to the adopted budget that you've already done.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I believe that Cindy's made a very articulate case for the need for this additional person in her office, and I would make a motion to let that happen.
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? You know, I agree with Cindy, your case, and I understand your need, and I also understand your concerns about how much you work and all that kind of stuff. I think we're all in that category, even the people sitting up here, overworked and underpaid, if you believe that or not. That's beside the point. The issue is, is that I think the timing is bad on this. I think we ought to be looking at this toward the end of the year, when we know what everybody else is going to be bringing in for requests, because I know at this point that there's some issues with the jail, the Public Defender's Office, with the Sheriff's Department, that we're going to have to find a way to fund all of those out of this, quote, "general fund" surplus, if there is any. I would support it in a month, but I'm having a difficult time doing it right now, until I have the whole puzzle, so to speak. If we do it one piece by one piece through this process, we don't know what the whole picture looks like. And I wish I could do it right now, and I want you to know, I support your efforts and your workload, and it's not a personal kind of issue, it's an issue of understanding the total picture before I can say yes or no to the priorities. And my priority right now is to get all the information before we're done. And we've got a month before the end of the year. So reluctantly, I will tell you that I would like to wait a month, but that's not the motion. So... Substitution motion? Go ahead. I'd like to move to defer to, what, the 20, 24th? Would that be the date, Ken?
Can I say something?
Suppose, as long as you're here. Let me pull my motion. No, go right ahead, since you're our brains of the group.
Well, if you're looking for timing on when you'll get information, we have sent out a, the auditor's office has sent out the memo, and that to all the departments, that our deadline for knowing when those supplements, you know, what we need for supplemental actions and what the departments are projecting, those are due in the auditor's office by the 9th. And the reason for that is because we need to then construct the notice of hearing that we will post and offer, and bring that to you on the 17th. And that, and on December 17th, that's when you'll have the complete list of what we should be looking at for supplements for the 2014 budget, and that, from all the departments. So if that helps you on establishing a date when you want to consider this, that you don't have to wait a month, because we will have that information sooner than that.
Question then. Ken, don't go away. We're talking, we're going to supplement 2014, not 2013?
You're supplementing the 2013 budget.
Yeah.
And that, that's what...
Okay, you said 14.
I'm sorry.
But you meant 13.
2013.
Okay, okay.
And that. And that. But again, if you're waiting to hear, you're considering the action, and you want to have, you know, where you're at money-wise, that's when you'll know. Cindy is right. She's asking that if you approve this position, you're still going to have to take an action in 2014 to supplement her budget, if you add this position.
Yeah, I understand that, but the issue is, we've all heard from just about half of our departments, all saying the same thing, that they are not going to be able to make it through the end of the year with the support that they've been given. We're going to have to make some sort of conversation about not only the issues of the operating cost of our budget, but the capital part of our budget, that we're going to be faced with, with a jail issue, some remodeling of maybe the JDC, some remodeling of the Highway Department, all of those things that are coming up. And frankly, we need to have a picture of the whole organization and how we're going to continue to do this, because we can't at 11th hour always take money away from the budget balance, if you will, of the general fund, and use it not only to balance 2013, but then to drag it into 2014. Because whether you're talking '13 or '14, it's still cash.
It is.
And I think we have to get to the point where we need to talk about that at one time with everyone, rather than doing it one department at a time. I was in the middle of a... I'm sorry. ...motion there, so I don't understand. But my motion would be to defer to the 24th of December, this item. Is there a second? I can't second it. That I know for a fact. Okay, it dies for a lack of a second.
The reason I'm not going to second is I don't want to put a date on it, because maybe we won't be ready by the 24th to bring it up again, and then we're going to defer it again. So I'm not, I'm not opposed to what Cindy's bringing to us. I just don't want to put a date on it. If we decide it's going to be ready on the 24th, then we'll put it on the 24th. We can decide that on the 17th.
Well, the 17th, we're going to be addressing 13 budget. This is a 14 item. We'll know better, because all of it comes out of a cash applied. We, when we set our budget, we set a, I think our goal was $3 million. I think we ended up at about 3.2. Is that correct? On cash apply? What were we cash applied?
I have to go back.
For 14.
Oh, for 14? I'll have to go back and look, but it should be very close to that $3 million range that you set.
Okay. But any money that we supplement out of, out of 13 is going to come out of that cash balance number.
Again, we run, you know, we run on a cash basis. We run on a cash balance basis, and that, so in effect, that you're right. We've got money coming in, we've got money coming out, and that, and, you know, as I understand what you want to do, you want to see where we're ending on cash for 2013, for where we have to supplement, and that's before you consider Cindy's request for 2014. But remember, in 2014, you would have to supplement if you approve her request. But we will, we will have a good idea on those numbers and what we, what we need to end 2013 for our departments. We will have that for you by the 17th. That's when we, we have to come to you that day to post the notice of hearing and identify what those dollar amounts are. So we'll have that info for you on the 17th.
But I, there, I think the 24th, and if we don't have the information by 24th, we can defer to the 31st, but 24th, John will be here, I believe.
Yeah.
And I think we would prefer to do this, you know, the whole thing. We spent a lot of time on that budget last year, getting to that $3 million mark. And our cash is good right now, but if we eat it all up in 2013, supplements, it isn't going to be good. And I'm not convinced this economy is going to continue to grow like it is right now. So we got to be prepared, at least, so we don't get in the trap we were in in, what, 2009?
2011.
2011? We don't want to go back there again. I certainly don't want to go through another budget process like that, so I can't, my motion died, but I, I will support what Gerald's asking, and I wish somebody else would make a motion to defer.
John?
Commissioner Beckus?
I absolutely respect your position and also Dick Kelly's position. I guess the reason why I seconded the motion, one, is that we've, we talk about this, and we're going into a legislative cycle once again, where we have to see what the state is going to do. And I'd like to say that I'm optimistic. I'm not. However, when we talk about county government, county government funding is chronic, chronically underfunded. We're looking at counties that are facing bankruptcy in South Dakota, but yet, the city of Sioux Falls and the state of South Dakota, they have a budget surplus. If you chronically underfund one of your partners, it's no surprise that the city and the state is flush with cash. However, our obligation statutorily is to meet the basic needs as defined by statute. The person we charged with management of the Public Advocate's Office has said they aren't meeting that standard. They are, they are at risk. We have to respect the statement that was provided to this board, and also, I believe that, at this point, my fear is that we are probably looking with the chronic underfunding related to law enforcement, which she is actually included in the law enforcement side of the budget, another underfunded law enforcement obligation that this county has to pay. And without the requisite acknowledgement and understanding by the legislature in the state, as well as the people of Minnella County, we are going to have, once again, another unfortunate circumstance where we're going to have to opt out, because we can't continue to fund all the obligations with constantly shorting the bare statutory requirements. And the concern I have is that we've got a department head here who's telling us that they are at risk, and we need to acknowledge that. And that's why I think that, at this point, I'm going to support the motion. And if this coming spring, if we go through a budget process where, once again, we're chronically underfunded, but the state is flush with cash, and the city's flush with cash, the legislature will say, "You only have one option. I gave you that option, and that's to opt out." And that's what we've had to do every single time. But since I've been elected, I've never had the county come in and say, "Guess what? We've got enough cash." We are the constant, underfunded government entity in the state of South Dakota. And I think this year is an absolutely poetic situation. The state has a surplus, the city has a surplus, and we're at a double. So we still have to meet our basic statutory obligations.
Commissioner Barth?
I think this has been a great debate, and certainly, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the points that you brought up, and what Dick had to say as well. But we are living through a virtual crime wave here. And, you know, our alternatives are to stop charging criminals with crimes, stop arresting criminals with crimes. Commissioner Kelly talked about our economy next year. Well, I promise that if our economy gets worse, we're going to have more crime. And this is a natural result of the crime wave we're living through, and, you know, I think to postpone taking this action will even be more expensive than taking the action today. Our funding problems next year are going to be difficult, extremely difficult, but I, you know, we're just going to have to face them and take action. And, you know, those citizens that have other ideas, you know, perhaps we should... And, you know, those citizens that have other ideas, you know, perhaps we should set the city of Sioux Falls' police on furlough for a month. Perhaps we should downsize our state's attorney's office by five or six prosecutors. Perhaps we should forget the idea of building a new jail and in fact, close the one we've got. Think of the savings. But no, we have to take care of these responsibilities, and one of those responsibilities is taking charge of, of people who are breaking the law, whether they're guilty or innocent, whether they're charged with the right crime or the wrong crime. And I think, again, our, our public advocate has made a strong case, and I, I hope we will find a way to help her.
Commissioner Kelly?
I, I think we're getting off track here. I, I think probably the commission's in agreement to the, to the need for what Cindy has requested. However, I think at least two of us would like to see a deferral of this thing for two weeks or three weeks. I don't think it's going to affect her case. In fact, she could probably make it stronger at that point. But right now, we're not talking about underfunding or anything else. We're talking about just deferring this action for, for a month.
Other comments?
I think we have a motion and a second on
On the original, we had, yeah, Barth and Pecus move to approve the original motion. Kelly's died for lack of a second. If you're going to do a vote, I'd like to do a roll call with this one.
That'd be good.
Very good. Okay.
Any other comments before we go to that? If not, we will go to the roll call vote. Those in favor of Cindy's request would vote aye. Those opposed, nay. Correct?
That's correct. Okay. Start with the roll call vote. Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Commissioner Hiberger?
No.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Commissioner Pecus?
Aye.
Mr. Bennigan?
No.
Is there amended conversations at all?
I believe this could be brought back by Cindy and could it not?
Well, I certainly want you to bring it back. That's not the issue. And as I said before, I think your request is good. I think the timing is a little bit off. I think the issue is, again, from my perspective, and I know I'm not supposed to say much about this, but it's hard for anybody to make a good decision in our seat without everybody's information. And frankly, we've got 15 departments that are probably going to come up with some sort of statutory requirement on what they have to do or what they can't do. And I would guess and probably would be surprised if we didn't hear from every department to say that they're overworked or understaffed. And some of those have higher priorities. And I want you to know that we still value your input, but I think we have the responsibility to list to the, listen to the other 14 departments before we decide how we spend any, quote, excess cash that we may or may not have. Because we're making some assumptions here that aren't black and white assumptions. And so please bring it back. It's not a defeat, it's a delay. And at this point, I would also hope that at some point, we would have a management system together so we could do some case management of, and some management reports of frankly, all the things that we've talked about in the public defender's office and in your office and even in the state's attorney's office about not only the number of cases and the ratios, but how much time we're actually able to bill versus what our responsibilities are. It's extremely important for us to have management information to be making these kinds of decisions. So, end of my sermon, I guess.
If you allow me the latitude, then, like I said, we will have that information for you at the meeting on the 17th.
Okay.
I mean, if you'd like to revisit this issue at that time, at least you'll see the, you will have the laundry list of where we think everything is. And that might be a great time to bring this back is by that date because we will have the numbers.
I would suspect that we'll talk about putting it back on the agenda for the 17th. Item C would be motion to approve changes to the Holiday and Family and Medical Leave Act policies.
I'm requesting your approval on two minor changes to those two policies for family medical leave. The update is simply to reflect legislation that was passed earlier this year. In addition to the changes that were redlined on the copy that we gave to you, I would also like to add, on the fifth line down under section five, where it says for a serious injury or illness incurred, I'd like to add or aggravated in the line of duty for covered active service. So the changes here are just to mirror legislative changes and to make sure that we expand the covered up on the line. On the holiday, it's even more simple than that. When we change to allow the day after Thanksgiving as a holiday, we put the Fourth Friday because Thanksgiving is the Fourth Thursday. Wouldn't you know it, this year, the Fourth Friday was last week. So I'm asking your approval to change the Friday following Thanksgiving instead.
Any comments?
Motion to approve those changes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the changes, I believe, as presented by Carrie this morning. Anyone have any questions, concerns? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Letter D is a briefing on proposed changes to the full-time, part-time, temporary, and seasonal employees policy.
The reason for these changes go back to healthcare reform, plus a little cleanup for our own office on the terminology that we use. I didn't provide you with a redline copy on this because the changes are substantial. The intent behind those are to do two things. First, to go ahead and define more accurately what a regular full-time or part-time position is. And this is where we want to make it clear that anything that, any part-time position that requires 30 or more hours per week would be eligible to participate in health insurance. Now, you remember through the budget process that we eliminated this essentially. We don't have any positions currently that would fall within that part. We do have part-time budgeted positions, but it's below the 30-hour-a-week threshold. The other reason is we want to clarify what a seasonal and variable hour position is. Right now, we use words like temp, but it being certain or different things in different scenarios. So we want to clarify that seasonal is a person hired for a short period of time, whether that be on a part-time or full-time basis. And a variable hour employee is somebody who's hired indefinitely, but for 20, well, actually, we're asking for 18 or fewer hours per week. Also, as part of this, what we're doing is ensuring that we're monitoring the hours of both seasonal and variable hour employees to make sure that if it's variable, that it's staying below the SDRS threshold. And if it's seasonal, that it's staying as well below the 30-hour-a-week threshold for healthcare reform. The only change here, and if you're comfortable with this, we can certainly ask for your approval this, this week. I know this is something you want to take a little time with. The only other change that I would say we would like to do is on the third from bottom paragraph, fourth line, and it says variable hour employees filling positions outside the county's classification plan are also eligible for increases every other year. That's a typo, and it should read every year, just like the rest of our employees.
So you need a motion to amend that?
It, it depends. If you're ready to approve it this week, then yes. If you'd like me to bring it back in two weeks, then I'll make sure that you have the correct copy then.
Okay.
Any questions for Carrie?
I don't see that we got any issue with this thing recommended by Cindy. I would make a motion to approve the changes.
With the recommendation to amend? Every other year to every year?
Yeah.
All right. Then I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation with the amendment to every year. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
So E, letter E would be a briefing on proposed policy for on-call employees in facilities, human services, and information technology departments.
This is an entirely new policy, something for those of you who've been on the commission for a while, you probably remember we were discussing about five, six years ago. The intent behind this policy is we have a very select few employees in three different departments who are responsible for carrying a phone to respond to emergency situations. This is not anybody who carries a phone. This is only in those departments that they have to have one individual assigned to answer and respond to emergencies at any given time. And those three departments are facilities, human services, and information technologies. The proposal is here to provide a nominal on-call pay of $15 a day, just in recognition that those people, of course, even though they're on their own time, maybe in the evening or the weekends, they're restricted in what they can do, frankly. They can't go outside of the area. They have to be able to respond in a short period of time. They can go out for dinner, of course, probably can have a drink while they're out for dinner, have to realize that they may be interrupted in the movies. It's just a small amount to recognize that inconvenience. It does have a budgetary cost, however, and it's not budgeted for next year. It would be about $5,000 per department, a little bit over that, so about $16,425 total for the entire county. Two of those departments have indicated that there's the potential that they may be able to absorb some of that because really, it's a nominal amount compared to their total salary budget. This is meant to be a briefing today, and we would bring it back in two weeks if you felt there might be support for looking at this policy change.
Any questions with Carrie?
Commissioner Barth?
On a call-out, is there a minimum number of hours that they get paid, or is it just the actual time that they're on the job?
That's a really good question, and that, that's a good point. There isn't. You get paid for your actual hours worked. So if somebody picks up the phone and answers a, a call and they can do it from home, if it's de minimis, they're not paid. Otherwise, they're paid in their 15-minute increments or their period of time. If they come back, there's no additional benefit like time and a half or a minimum of two hours like you would find in a contract or in some of our contracts, is they're paid for what they work.
Any other questions? Would you like to defer this to next week, or would you like to make a motion no?
I'm comfortable with making a motion. I'll make a motion to approve it this week.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the policy as stated. Commissioner Kelly?
I do have a question. You said that they don't get paid time and a half, but do they have to flex out that, that time?
It would depend on the department. You're right, if it's over 40 hours a week, they would get time and a half, assuming those were all hours physically worked. But I may have understood that your intent of the question differently. A lot of our employees are covered under contracts, so they're guaranteed that no many, no matter how many hours they've worked that week, they're going to get time and a half. Or if they're called back, they're going to get a minimum amount of time, like two hours. For these employees, they don't have that contract provisions, and that's why we're proposing at least the $15 a day recognition for that extra inconvenience.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the policy as stated. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Letter F is a briefing on updates to the drug and alcohol policy and a proposed drug and alcohol procedures manual.
Really, I'm only asking for your, your approval on changes to the drug and alcohol policy for Minnehaha County. And if you're looking at, at the actual policy itself, there aren't really that many changes. But because of the importance of this, and as you know, we're looking at implementing random drug and alcohol testing in our safety-sensitive positions next year. Because as we're looking at that policy, our attorney that we had helped us through that process recommended that we have a more thorough procedures manual. For that reason, I'm providing you with both copies so that you can see what the intent is. So the policy itself really hasn't changed that much. If anything, we've taken information out of there because we put it in the procedures manual instead. And what the procedures manual calls for is pre-employment drug testing only for our DOT positions and our safety-sensitive. As a reminder, we're a public employer, and it's because of that, we have restrictions on how much drug and alcohol testing we can do on a pre-employment basis. So this is only for safety-sensitive and DOT positions. It also allows random drug testing for both DOT and safety-sensitive positions. You'll probably remember that was an item that we negotiated with our Sheriff's Office Union this year as well. In addition, there's provisions for reasonable suspicion testing, post accident and safety violations, which are, of course, things that we do currently. And this just sets up more solidified procedures for how we're going to make sure that those take place, to make sure we're doing them consistently and fairly. There's also return-to-work provisions. In some situations, if we have a potential violation of a drug and alcohol policy, we may require an employee to go to treatment. This return-to-work is the agreement that we put in place outlining our expectations for them when they return to work and the parameters for that. Again, nothing new that we haven't been doing in the past. However, we've set up the procedures to indicate things like what kind of drugs we're going to be testing for, what kind of timeframes would follow a post-accident or reasonable suspicion or return-to-work agreement.
Commissioner Kelly?
In the emergency management department, we have a lot of volunteers who are driving vehicles with red lights and sirens. Are they covered under this policy?
The volunteers currently are not. This is only for employees. However, that is something that Lynda Young and I have discussed and, you know, hopefully expanding to. But as you know, we budgeted a certain amount to start covering it for our employees. So the short answer is no, not yet, but something that we'll be looking at in the future.
Yeah, because I think that would be, if, if they have an accident and there's drug or alcohol involved, we got a problem. It's our vehicle they're driving and, so I guess if you're working on it, I won't, you know, I, I just hope we'll address that issue also.
Good question. Anybody else have questions? If not, is there a motion, or do you want to move this to next week?
Just to comment, this was a briefing only because I think currently, the department heads are still reviewing this, and so it needs to wait.
Okay.
On this one, yes, I would like two weeks, please.
So we won't take a motion.
Thank you. They all say briefing.
Not all. A couple of them we were okay moving forward on. And the department heads have looked at everything, but as Commissioner Hiberger indicated, the only one that I would still like to give them some time to review is the drug and alcohol because it's pretty expensive, the procedures are at least.
Letter G is to consider motion to approve premium holiday for the Minnehaha Group Health Plan.
You know about this time of year, in fact, throughout the months, every time of the year, we watch and monitor the amount of our healthcare claim costs and our health fund reserves. This year, we are running currently about 3.1 million in our health fund reserves. That's adequate level, maybe a little bit higher than adequate. And for that reason, I'm recommending that we hold one premium holiday on the first payroll period in December. That will have a cost to the health fund. In other words, we will not be, it's not an actual cost, but we won't be taking in revenue for that period of around $180,000. But I do think, of course, that it's something that we can absorb. Otherwise, I wouldn't be making the recommendation.
Commissioner Barth?
That'll save the employees money as well, right?
That's correct. It'll be about $120,000 in savings for employees.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the premium holiday for the group health plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Carrie.
Number six is application for abatement. We understand we have none. Number seven is notice and requests. I'm unaware of any. Number eight is planning and zoning notices. I don't see anybody from there, so I'm going to assume there's not. Number nine, we have petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus?
Thank you, Mr. Auditor. This is on DPNO number 64925, and there isn't an amount listed, but it is on the briefing memo. It's $6,957.07. Once again, dealing in this particular situation, this is probably one of the more complex liens that we've had to deal with. And so I'll try to, actually, I talked to Kirsten about it. I'll try to keep it as basic as I can, but I'm sure you all will have questions. This is a foreclosure action, and the foreclosure was brought against an individual that received both a public defender, a public advocate, and I believe court relief services, or no, burial services from the county. And this lien attached to the property that he owns, he owns a house. In the process of, of the lien being supplied, he passed away. And so at this point, the applicant that actually received the benefits had a house. That house had a first mortgage on it, which is superior to all the other liens that are sitting out there. And Minnehaha County would be a junior lien holder. So when a foreclosure action was brought prior to his death, we, of course, would have been served, or at least given notice of it, as a junior lien holder, and the bank would have to foreclose out our interest to go ahead and get their hands on the house. In the process of going through this foreclosure process, the individual, the applicant, passed away. So we have a circumstance where the person received benefits from Minnehaha County, we're a junior lien holder, and we're in the process of a foreclosure action. So the bank goes ahead and takes the foreclosure and clears out all the other junior lien holders, and ultimately, they sell it to the, the current people that are living in the house. They purchased the house, and in the course of the closing, they discovered that Minnehaha County and many other creditors, most likely, still have a claim against this particular property. The title lien company would not issue title insurance on the property because of our existing lien. Now, what you have to understand is the foreclosure action actually on file with the Register of Deeds Office closed out all the other junior interests, which would have included Minnehaha County. However, the title company won't issue However, the title company won't issue a title insurance policy. My belief is that the reason that they won't insure this particular property for title insurance is because the person died in the middle of the foreclosure process. And once the person passes away, technically, you have to bring this foreclosure action in probate court. That was never done in this case. However, a judge still signed the foreclosure papers that are on file down at the Register of Deeds Office. So the reality of the situation is that whatever we do currently for the applicants to try to resolve this particular lien problem, it will not resolve the underlying title problems that are existing here. Even if we were to request money being paid with the idea that the title insurance company or the bank would go ahead and have to come forward with this money for the applicants, the problem that exists in this particular situation is that they most likely would not pay, and it would be the current applicant that would have to fork out the dough. The current applicant is actually the party that purchased the house in good faith, and now they're being told they can't get title insurance. So rather than go ahead and ask them to go ahead and try to come up with extra cash for Minnehaha County, I'm going to float the motion. I'm not making the motion yet, but I'm going to float the motion that we go ahead and allow the lien to rest personally against the dead applicant that got the benefits from Minnehaha County and release it as to the property. Now, I'm going to make that motion. The problem with this whole scenario is that it's not going to resolve their underlying problem, and that's that there are other creditors out there that probably have the same issues because the bank that did the foreclosure action didn't do it properly. And we're not going to resolve that issue. We can't do that. Once again, remember, we're a junior lien holder. It's the bank that can clear us out. We're not going to get any money out of this because we're the junior lien holder. So ultimately, it's not, we aren't going to resolve their problems, but I can tell you that there is a problem with this particular situation. But the only way I can actually help the people that are coming in saying, "Help us get title insurance," they're going to have to reach into their back pocket and hire a lawyer, probably bring quite title action. But that's not our burden, that's going to be their burden. And I actually bounced it off state's attorney. This is, you know, I'm just a stupid lawyer, but I can read this type of situation. I kind of see this is how it's going to have to play out. But anyway, I will float the motion that they're requesting, but I don't think it's going to resolve their underlying problem. So does anybody have any questions at this point before I make the motion?
Commissioner Kelly?
Do we have any idea if the house sold for more than the $86,003.98?
In the paperwork that Robert got me, it looks like they took a foreclosure action. It was well over $90,000, but I don't know how much they purchased it for. I don't have the purchase agreement.
Well, first of all, you're not a stupid attorney because I actually understood what you said. And I do appreciate your doing this because these seem to get more and more complicated as we go on, so thank you for your help in that. Kirsten, do you have any opinion on this also?
Yeah, I really think that Commissioner Pecus is correct about this. The thing that complicated this is that the death happened during the pending foreclosure. I'm not, I'm not going to be overly sunny about us eventually recovering. Once we leave it against the decedent, I mean, that's the reality of it, but the fact of the matter is we are a junior lien holder in this instance. And again, the new owners, even without our lien resting against the property, are going to have other issues with getting good title to this property. But frankly, I think we would go to the expense of litigating this on behalf of the county if we contested this, and we ultimately would not recover anything. So as a practical matter, I think releasing is the right thing to do in full against the property.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yeah, Commissioner?
I just happened to notice that we got a bill for $3,100 for court-appointed attorney more than a month after the party's passing. Now, why would we pay that if the guy is gone, I guess?
Yeah, I can answer that. Once the judge signs the lien, the lien is going to get paid to the attorney that provided the benefits. So it went to an outside attorney, I believe, that was appointed.
And the dates that are on the lien record are not the date that you both paid the bill or anything like that of service. It's when the lien was filed. That's the date of the lien.
And I don't, sure. And I don't know if this would have mattered in this situation, but I think this is also an example of what I would say in making sure that these liens are put on a particular individual timely instead of way far down the road because obviously, in this case, circumstances change. I don't know if that would have changed this one, but you can see how a delay in putting that obligation on the person and the property can change the circumstances of the person and property so much that it makes it less recoverable, so.
Any other comments? Is the applicant here, and would they like to make any comments? No, the applicant's not here.
Well, I'm going to make a motion then. My motion is to go ahead and to release the lien as to the property, but have it placed, of course, personally still on the decedent case. Some creditor someday ever steps forward to actually do a probate for unfunded probate, which I don't believe is going to happen.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to, I guess, release the lien on the property and apply it to the deceased individual. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Now's the time for an opportunity for any public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments about an item that is not on the agenda, please step forward. If not, no one's moving, we'll go to item 10.
Under regular business, item 10 is to consider a bid award for Project MC 121 STR-13, two bridge structures on Minnehaha County Highway 121. Bids were open on November 20, 2013. D.J. Boothby.
Morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothby, Highway Superintendent. I thought with six items on regular business that this would be nice and short meeting. So I'll try to make this short and sweet. Item number 10 is for the bid award for two structures on Highway 121. Pursuant to your authorization, the Highway Department conducted a bid letting for the structures' replacement and a little bit of grading on Highway 121. We received seven bids, and the bids turned out favorable. They were within our engineers' estimate and grouped together, so we're comfortable with those bids. The two structures that we're looking at replacing are currently posted for gross tonnage of six tons and three tons, and they're two of the posted bridges that are in our county that are totaling about 30 different posted bridges. So we're looking forward to getting these replaced. There's a summary of the bid letting right there. This is prime construction. They're out of slate in Minnesota. And so if you have any questions about the bid award, I can answer them now.
Thank you, D.J. Does anyone have any questions for D.J.? Is there any action or motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, I'm assuming, to approve the bid award. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item number 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement for professional design engineering services for the replacement of structure number 50-082-110 in its west branch of Skunk Creek. D.J. Boothby.
Commissioners, this bridge is for 2014 construction also. This agreement is similar to the rest of them that we've been doing for preliminary engineering, which brings us through the TSNL, which is that initial phase of the design where we evaluate the structure and what's going on with the bridge, and we determine how we want to replace it. And then upon that completion of that, we move into the final design before going to a bid letting. The map here shows, you can see the red cloud on the center-right side of the page. That shows the bridge location. It is on a township road. It's in pretty rough shape, and we look, this is again another one of the 30 posted bridges that we have right now. We look forward to replacing this one. If you have any questions right now before we request a motion to approve this agreement, I can answer them now.
Any questions of D.J.?
Make a motion to authorize you to sign that, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the signature of the agreement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thanks, D.J.
Item number 12 is a briefing presentation of Minnehaha County Graphic Standards Manual and Letterhead Templates. We have Kira Mueller and Ken McFarland.
As you know, earlier this year, earlier this year, you had made the decision to develop for consistency purposes in the county a graphic standards manual and to try to standardize our letterheads and our, everything that we use for business, both letterhead for business cards, for stationery, and for envelopes. And you had appointed a committee to take a look at doing that. That committee's been at work for a good part of the summer and into the fall, and we are at the point where I think we're ready to roll out some of the documents that have been prepared. I want to draw your attention to in the corner there, and that one of the things that was important to the committee was to develop a standardized logo for the county, a logo that could be used, again, on our letterhead, on our envelopes, on our business cards, as Commissioner Kelly has indicated numerous times, on shirts and other features. And we've never had a standardized logo before. And what you have before you is what we've come up with in the design process and in consultation with our graphic designer, which was Caliber Creative, and with kind of a consensus with our department. As you see, and I hope you see it right in the middle there, what draws your attention to the M, that's a stylized version of the clock tower on the Old Courthouse Museum. So that was important to incorporate that into the design as well. D.J., could you do me a favor? Next one, Dana. What was also important in this development of this process was the development of a seal, something that could be more, that we could use for an official document. And after a lot of work in consultation with our museum folks, who were a big help in helping to make some suggestions in this, and something that would also maintain the history and the historical nature of the county, you know, and the graphic symbol we have of the Old Courthouse Museum, and this is the seal that we came up with. How that all ties together, and I hope you noticed it in our briefing memo that we did for you on this topic. What you have on the screen right now is an example of what we hope to be the standardized stationery for the county. Up top, you would see the list of the county department, and then, in your instance, you know, the list of the county officials from that department. And then on the bottom is where we've incorporated both the logo and the department heads felt it was important to incorporate the seal into the stationery documents as well. So what you see here is an example of what a new stationery would look like for the county. Now, there's some other things that we did along those lines, is that we developed a graphic standards manual that outlines how documents are to be prepared and so forth. And so what you have here is the history of the manual itself and how we've incorporated those designs and why we've incorporated those designs into our official correspondence. One thing I wanted to show you, again, there's the seal. We've got, you know, when the seal may be used, when the logo may be used, et cetera, and under what, you know, what colors, the fonts. What was also important to the departments is we have a number of departments that have developed through the years some of their own seals and some of their own diagrams that they've used on their stationery. The Sheriff Department, the Public Defender, the Sulan Heritage Museum, Emergency Management Corridor. And so we've made allowances in this document in how we would incorporate those things into a letterhead and let them use those as part of their identity. I'll give you an example here. The Public Defender is we've allowed them to continue to use their seal and to maintain that identity on their stationery and still incorporate what we thought was important for the county logo and for the seal. This is an example of your stationery, and this is an example of what our envelopes would look like going forward within the departments. This one just happens to be from the Treasurers, but we would also allow, again, some of the departments to maintain their identity in that, in the documents that they send out as well. But then that was, that was very important to some of the departments to help maintain that identity. We've also established this is what the business cards would look like. It would incorporate the seal. This is a front and back version of the business card. It has the logo and all of the information. So our hope is that we would, again, have a uniformity of what, of business cards that we put out for folks. We've also got some don'ts, how you, you know, you can't distort the seal. So we, so we've, we've come up with those, those rules and regulations governing the use of both the seal and the logo. Right now, we're working with Caliber Creative. We've got, we have some technical issues that are almost resolved to, to make this easier to use with the departments, and that, but it's our hope that we can roll these out in very, very short order. I'm not asking for your approval today because I know this is the first that many of you have seen this, but some of our departments are very eager to move forward with the new format. We've been experimenting with the templates, as you saw. In fact, again, if you go back to my briefing memo on this, you did see, you know, we did use the new document to give you an idea of flavor what new documents would look like. So, you know, I want to thank Carol Mueller. She's been very instrumental in this process. Monty, and I appreciate his patience because we've had a few technical glitches that we've had to work out, and we're still continuing to work on some of those. Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Heiburger, and that this has been kind of going along in fits and starts, but I'm happy to say I think we have a good product that we're very close to rolling out with your approval.
Thank you, Ken. Any comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
This is going to be printed within, within our, internally, we're not going to be sending this out to printers outside of the county, correct?
We are setting this up in two ways. And that, number one, in order to maintain the quality particularly on the envelopes and on business cards, and that those are structured so the S, that we would make the CDs available to printers, and you can also print some high-quality stationery off of there. However, we're also running this and putting them on everybody's S drive, so, and that's how I did this, is access it on the S drive so that you can print the bulk of your, your letters directly off of your printer without the necessity of going to, to print shops. So it, you can do it both ways.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Are we going to be ready for a January 1 roll out on this thing, or?
Well, like I said, there's a number of departments who are eager to start now. I mean, again, I can bring this back to you for formal adoption within a week or two. We didn't want to do that today because some of the commissioners, this is the first time that they've seen the product, and we wanted them to have an opportunity to look at it first. But I will tell you that the Treasurer's Office is already playing with incorporating the logo on the tax bills that are going out because she has some deadlines for printing coming up, and the preliminary drafts of that, you know, containing the logo look really nice. They look very good.
So in deference to the Treasurer's Office alone, we would want to probably do it next week?
Dan, we can certainly do that. And I would welcome any comments that the commission has about what we've come up with, with the logos and the seal. And again, our goal is to standardize our business communications within the county.
Any comments beside the ones given? Any comments beside the ones given?
Well, I just, this will give us a continuity that we haven't had, and so anything coming from Minnehaha County is going to be easily identifiable, and it is from the county, and yet still some autonomy within the departments. This was, this took a lot of work. There were a lot of discussions and debates back and forth, and colors and everything else, and I, I hope that we will, this is something that's going to be long-term. The, the seal will probably last forever, the, the logo itself should be good for five, 10 years, or whatever, you know, however future commissions decide, but this, we finally have a professional situation to deal from, and I would encourage that we get it done sooner rather than later.
Okay.
And one of the things, too, I want to reiterate, what we designed these, and again, this is an example of the Commission's proposed letterhead, we designed these to not only print in color from sitting at your desk if needed, or, again, you could order it stationery-wise for super-high-quality paper, if that's what you want, but we can print these, and these will print in black and white as well, that you don't have to do color. And so those are the templates that we're making available. Right now, we've made these templates available to each of the departments already so that they can look at them, experiment with them, to see, you know, if, how they work and how they look, and so we've got a couple more things that we need to do. In fact, we just had a meeting today with the Caliber folks just for some final thing, issues that we need to iron out before we're completely ready for rollout, and that, but there's a lot of people very eager to start using this, particularly the business cards, so, which I'm going to have to reorder for all of you as well.
Any other comments? Today's a briefing, so thank you, Carol.
She had to leave.
She was here.
She's in Union County today talking about the possibility of some joint function with them as far as doing their human services, so.
Good. And thank you, Commissioner Heiburger and Commissioner Kelly, and DJ and Vanna Beuthy back there for their presentation. Hopefully, you'll be able to come back in a week or so to do that presentation. Item 13.
Item 13 is to authorize the Chairman to sign an agreement between Volunteers of America Dakotas and Minnehaha County for operation of reception and evening report centers in conjunction with JDAI project, and that is Erin Serska.
Good morning, Commissioner Erin Serska, JDAI Coordinator. What we're looking for today is approval of this contract, JDAI. One of the main reasons of its success is having community-based alternatives available instead of putting our kids in our secured detention beds. For the first few years, we had some grant seed money to get these programs up and going. At the end of this year, the grant money has ceased, and we've been approved for the budget to fund these programs. So what we have here is the contract with BOA to supply the reception center and the evening report center program starting January 1st through December 31st of next year.
Thank you, Erin. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Erin? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment that BOA will be supplying us with monthly statistical reports to make sure that we are on track with what JDAI's expectations are for this program, so we're keeping a close eye on it still.
Do you want to make a quick comment about the attendance in JDC Secured and Non-Secured since this process has started? I think a few years ago, we were looking at building a hundred-bed facility, and now we're down to talking about a much smaller issue, but average daily attendance for those two programs?
For non-secure and secure, well, secure population, in 2009, we were at 41, around 41 youth per day, and now, Minnehaha County, last calendar year was at about 11 per day, and this calendar year, we're at between 14 and 15 per day. So we've significantly dropped. The non-secure beds, we're at about five per day right now, so.
So awesome. Thank you for your leadership in that, that has been a wonderful alternative to what we've experienced in the past, so. Any other comments about the agreement with BOA? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement with BOA.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the agreement with Volunteers of America. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number 14 is a briefing on proposed county vehicle maintenance, replacement, and transfer policy. Final action is scheduled for December 3, 2013. Ken?
Commissioners, as you know, back in, back in September, we brought you a draft policy that we had prepared about vehicle replacement and purchase and use. Well, we did take that, we did take that policy back to all of the departments who really do have county vehicles, and we have worked, reworked that, this is on the wrong line, and we reworked that to, based on their needs. And so what you have before you today is our proposed policy going forward, and this would be added to the vehicle replacement, this would be added to the end of our purchasing policy. And what you have here, and this is a copy of the policy that we're, that we're bringing to you, is that, number one, is that this policy would recommend that departments consider replacement of sedans, light vans, light trucks, and SUVs at eight years or 150,000 miles. I know that was an item that got some serious discussion the last time we brought it, that our proposed replacement might be too short. One of the things that we did get rid of, you know, in the, in the draft, was we were trying to set some minimum use standards for the vehicles, and the departments who manage those vehicles felt that that was pretty, pretty unworkable and, and would not be consistent throughout the organization. And so they strongly recommended that we not adopt, quote, "minimum use requirements" for those, for vehicles. One of the things that we did do is on the transfer, and right now, I know this was an important issue with the Commission as far as the ability to transfer vehicles from departments. Right now, that's usually done, you know, without the, without the necessity of having a transfer of funds or, or budget for that particular transfer. And this particular policy says that while we can still transfer vehicles from one department to another, and that we do say that vehicles purchased with restricted funds or that are later transferred to the departments funded by the general fund must reimburse the department providing the vehicle for the actual estimated current value. So in other words, if the Highway Department has an old vehicle that they purchased with highway funds, and Equalization wants to give it, wants that vehicle, then there must be that accounting and budget transfer of the value of that vehicle from the, the Equalization Department back to the Highway Fund, and the, the title is transferred. So there is an accounting for that vehicle when it goes back and forth. The other thing that we talked about, the other thing that we talked about is that the departments, you wanted more information when, when you would consider budget time for vehicles. And so one of the things that we incorporated in, in this particular draft is much like when a department has to give you a personnel action form to request a new position that outlines all the reasons why they need that new position within their budget. The department has recommended that we do something very similar when we look at particularly new vehicles that they're asking to be budgeted for. And so we've developed this request form that talks about the type of vehicle that you're requesting, the estimated purchase price, what vehicles you're replacing with these, the estimated frequency of use of the vehicle, and then we have a standard list of questions on that concerning why are you getting rid of the other vehicles that you have, or why do you need this particular new vehicle? And then, so the departments felt that this would be a good, good way for you to, to get the information that you needed to, to have when you go into budget hearings. So, again, what we have before you today is the draft of what the Committee recommends is the adopted policy for the purchase and disposal and transfer of vehicles within departments, and this, if you agree to this, and we'll bring it back to you next Tuesday, the 3rd, this would be incorporated into the county's purchasing policy and would be tagged on at the end there. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer. And again, I want to thank the departments who have vehicles and worked really hard in coming up with this language for your consideration.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you for your leadership in that. Anyone have any questions of Ken about the policy?
So on this vehicle request form, that will be on file in your office, Ken?
These will be part of when you consider this at budget hearing, and you have a department that has a request that wants vehicles, these will part, be part of the documents that you'll have in their budget request for review.
Any other questions? If not, again, that will be discussed next week on December 3, and finalization at that point, thanks to depart, thank you to the department heads. With that, we'll go to item 15.
Item number 15 is to authorize the Chairman to sign engagement letter and waiver of potential conflict between Minnehaha County and Boyce Greenfield Pashby and Welk LLP for outside legal representation in Hutchinson Technology versus Minnehaha County. Kirsten Katmeyer?
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. On today's agenda is your, for your consideration, is a engagement letter and waiver of conflicts from Boyce Greenfield. As you may be aware, Minnehaha County has been sued by Hutchinson Technology Incorporated. They're the former owner of an industrial property in northern Sioux Falls. The basis for their claim is that, based on a sale of their property to Sanford Health, they are claiming that the assessed value of that industrial property in prior years was basically incorrect and are asking for the recouping of several years' worth of allegedly overpaid taxes. As to this day, Minnehaha County, through its State's Attorney's Office, has defended this suit in-house, being careful steward, stewards of the taxpayers' money and trying to minimize costs at this point. We brought a motion for summary judgment to the Circuit Court, asking that this suit that they find for Minnehaha County in this suit, basically based on a failure to exhaust administrative remedies through equalization, as well as that the Equalization Office's assessment methods complied with, with state law. In fact, it's compelled to be in certain methods under state law, which the Equalization Office did. We disagreed with the ruling rejecting summary judgment, and we petitioned the South Dakota Supreme Court for interlocutory review of the decision. They declined to do that. So at this point, counsel for Hutchinson Technology, after almost a year's worth of it just lying there without action, has now asked for us to proceed with discovery phase in this matter. I don't think I can oversell the importance of this case. This case, if Hutchinson Technology was to prevail, I think could disturb a lot of the ways in which property is assessed in the state of South Dakota, and I would recommend that we vigorously defend against this suit. To that end, because the State's Attorney's Office obviously has limited resources within its civil division, there are two of us handling all the day-to-day business on behalf of the county, we've done what we could in-house, but I really think it's appropriate to seek out expert outside counsel to vigorously defend against this suit. So to that end, I investigated firms that would be interested in providing that expertise, that had that expertise on staff and could provide us with, with cost-effective yet complete defense to this. And to that end, Boyce Greenfield has provided this engagement letter to us that I would ask you to sign. It lays out the terms and conditions of this representation in this suit alone. The firm did want me to advise you, however, that they do represent a party in a currently pending administrative appeal over bank franchise taxes. We are not a party to that, there could be some collateral consequences to that, but they just wanted us to let us know that they're representing another party in association with that and ask us to waive any conflict as to that. Frankly, anything that they would be privy to in this case as counsel for us has no bearing on that other case, so I believe it's appropriate to waive that conflict in signing this letter. So I'd ask that you sign this letter today.
Thank you, Kirsten. I think we all understand the implication of this particular lawsuit, and not only affects us, but it affects every form of government and every county, city, state, school district, and all of South Dakota. So this is a huge issue for us, and I think we need to go outside of our realm of expertise, if you will, and expect to defend this with professional support that has experience with it.
And if I may make one more comment, I bring this to you today not because it necessarily will exceed a certain amount of expenses under statute, but you are required to approve professional services contracts when they exceed $25,000. I don't have any reason to think it will at this point, but I'm asking for your approval in case that eventuality happens. It could be a very complex and, and long case, so I think Ken has additional comment on that. This is more of an abundance of caution, in my opinion, on this.
Typically, these things would come out of my budget, so I'm just reminding you that highly likely that there will be supplement down the line on this as this case proceeds.
You think we have budget problems now if we lose this case?
Well, if I may.
We'll be filing.
You know, and just to put it in the context so the people of Minnehaha County understand, this board is responsible, not only as the Commission, but sitting as the Board of Equalization to accurately tax property. This action by Hutch Tech is essentially a collateral attack on the amount of property taxes that they've paid, and those property taxes go not only to fund Minnehaha County, those property taxes help fund the state, those property tax, oh, not the state, but the school districts. And so the school district is one of the affected parties here, so we want to make sure that the players, obviously, are going to have a seat at this pretty big table, and there are some legitimate concerns, I believe, with this type of action going forward for everybody in our community.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? If not, I would look for a motion.
So moved, President Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Boyce Greenfield. Any other comments?
I think this, Mr. Chairman, I think this is as serious as any issue that we've ever faced, and, you know, when you appeal your valuation for decades ago or years ago and fail to appeal your valuation at that time, common sense indicates that, you know, you thought it was okay. On the other hand, I've never used the word interlocutory in a sentence before. Just did.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the letter of understanding. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item 16 is any liaison reports, County Commission, Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few, please bear with me. First of all, I am a liaison to the Interlake Community Action. They're going to have an annual fundraiser for the Heartland House, and they've offered any of us that wishes to, to have a tour of their operation at our convenience. Additionally, this fundraiser will be February 27, and I've arranged to purchase a table, not using taxpayer money, for that event. A couple of us attended last year, I think John and, and Dick went. It was a snowy night, but it was fun, and so put it on your calendars for February 27. Last night, on a different issue, we had a planning and zoning meeting, and we had a presentation by a company that had a proprietary method of treating hog waste that would remove much of the offensive nature of that product and allowed for surface application of, of that stuff. that stuff. Brown County and some of the Hutterite Colonies have already used it and with good results. And the Brown County Commissioners say, come on up and we'll show you. So I think that might be on our horizon. We also approved in rural residential areas, having up to six chickens. East Dakota Water had a meeting here in town and there is a chance that the D E N R may have some money that we could use to help remove some of the nitrates in our farm tiling water. Their bigger projects have ended and we're looking into that, Jane Gilbertson up there. And also, the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners has their board meeting and Dick will be going in my stead as I have a personal conflict. Finally, we had the meeting, the Southeast District Counties, and we had a nice discussion about alcohol tax. But an additional thing, earlier it was mentioned that we were talking to the Union County Commissioners about maybe working with them on their human services issues. There's a huge disparity between our own eight counties in this district on how things are treated. For example, one county said that they had paid $1,200 towards a utility bill for somebody. Our maximum here is $420. I think this is what happens when you don't have sort of a standard process of where you, on an ad hoc basis, make decisions. I think Union County said they'd only had 20 people come to them last year. Well, that allows for a lot of disparity on, on treatment. So there was even some talk about trying to do a regional policy where we would all use the same procedures and, and try to work under one umbrella, so to speak. That's my reports.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Kelly?
A few weeks ago, we approved $5,000 for the Sioux Falls Tomorrow 3 project. We had our first, and I've been asked to, to be the representative for the county. We had our first steering committee meeting yesterday. There were like, I think, six, Mike Cooper from the city, there were two representatives of the school district, first to Cool Board and United Way. We're going, the next step will be to find people to take the five key areas that pretty much will, will mirror what they did in 90, or in 2004. I tried to get one as public safety, but we, I believe, if I remember correctly, it's, it's going to be a public services and that will encompass the issue that I've talked about earlier on the, on our felonies and increased felonies and stuff. So we're going to roll that concept into, I think, into the Sioux Falls Tomorrow 3, which will hopefully address the issue and, and under a more organized banner. I would encourage any of you, because we'll be looking in those key performance areas, we will be looking for, for stakeholders. And I would encourage any of you to either let me know or let, let them know down at the foundation that Andy Patterson, is it, down there? Get involved in this thing because it's, the, the project in 2000, in 94 and the project in 2004 and now this one, what they set for goals in 2004, it's amazing how many, I'd, I'd say 75 to 80 percent, just looking at it, cursory look at it, that have been fulfilled or in process right now. It's an important way and they're, they're hoping to bring some younger people into this thing so that you're looking at the people that'll be in this community 30, 40, 50 years from now. And so let me know if you want to get involved in the thing. It's probably going to be, I think it's going to wrap up in June. It's probably going to be about six meetings, maybe, for the stakeholders. Though there's, there's areas and I'll probably send a memo out later when we get it really finalized. That's it.
Thank you, Dick. Any other liaison reports? Go to new business, anyone have any new business? I will just remind you that tonight at 5 o'clock, we have a joint city-county meeting with, at Carnegie Hall, and we need to make sure we have a quorum for that. I think we do, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to be there, assuming my wife's Windows 7 upgrade at work goes swimmingly.
I will not be there.
Okay. Commissioner Barth, you know, you're a yes.
I will be there.
You'll be there, I'll be there.
I'm planning on being there at this point.
Okay. You've got three and a half commitments. Any other new business? Any old business? If not, we need to go into exec session for contract and a legal briefing. I need a motion to do that, please.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to go into exec session for contract and legal briefing.
Yes.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, denied, motion unanimously passes.
How long?